All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Shelton, study session, commission study session. And the first item on our agenda is to do our weekly commission reports where we report what meetings and things we are involved in. And so I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Moore at this time.
Okay. I'm going to be attending the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum tonight. On Wednesday, I'm going to be attending the Journal After Hours. On Thursday, I have, oh, I'm doing a presentation to the Mason County Preservation Commission about the Roundhouse and the rail. And I also have a meeting with a gentleman who's newly retired, who's a project manager, who would like to help with that project when we get up and running. And on Saturday, I'm going to be attending the Ladies Night Out sponsored by the Retail Alliance of Downtown Shelton. It should be lots of fun. It goes to, it's a fundraiser for a good cause. And that's my week. I would just like to say, and this is Columbus Day and we're talking about that. And I had become aware that many cities are changing to, to change the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day. And so I would like to think about that for next year, beginning next year. We have, we have two tribes that are in Mason County. We, all of us, many of us have native roots. And it is maybe a more inclusive holiday to celebrate in the way that we do not celebrate. So we can have time to talk about that in the next year. But I would like to consider doing that. I've talked to a number of people and heard from a number of people about this, and there seems to be broad community support. So that's it. Happy Columbus Day this year, though.
There you go. Commissioner McDowell?
My turn. Well, today and Tuesday, working with On the Budget. Wednesday morning, I'll be celebrating the new financial department's grand reopening, eight o'clock, breakfast.
Really? For who else invited? Like me? You said breakfast?
Yeah, breakfast.
Okay, what day is that?
It's Wednesday, the eighth.
Eight o'clock? Well, I don't know if I'm invited. If I'm invited, I would probably like to come.
I think you're invited. Did you get an invitation?
Doubt it.
Cinnamon says you're invited.
Check your email.
You're invited.
Eight o'clock, is that here in the city center? Okay, thank you.
So excited about that. Wednesday, the Chambers After Hours. And Friday, we, I will be going with Ryan and Chief Moody over to visit a triage center in Tumwater. We're talking about putting one here in Shelton. So anyway, that's what I'm doing Friday. And Saturday, ladies' night out. That's my schedule.
All right. And my schedule for this week will be tomorrow, attending my monthly MaceCom board meeting. And their Chief McKern, there, he's also on that board. So we're planning to meet tomorrow at three o'clock. Is that correct? There you go. Wednesday, I will be going to the Chamber After Hours. Thursday, I will be attending my monthly Economic Development Council Board Meeting. And if I can get up in time to be part of the grand opening of our new financial whatever, since breakfast might be available, I will try and make it over to see what's going on with that. So that completes.
Wednesday the 12th.
The 12th, oh, it's not this week?
It's Wednesday the 12th, day after tomorrow.
Oh, it is, okay, yeah, this week.
Just wanted to make sure.
No, I got it written down.
Okay.
I got priorities. So that completes those. And now is opening our opportunity for general public comment. We have a little list. If anybody wants to say anything, here's your opportunity. That's the list. If not, we will move forward to our consent agenda. So are we ready for reading in the consent agenda? Yes?
Handwritten warrant number 12761 to KeyBank in the amount of $3,869.11.
Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a second tab.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda passes. And we are taking these day meetings, and we're kind of trying to make them a little bit more study session oriented here. And so we've kind of just gotten habit of just running all meetings kind of the same way. But this time, we're doing something a little bit different. There's no old business, no new business. But we're going to take this opportunity to have some staff reports from some other departments. And, all right?
Did you miss that?
Which one? Do we, I had Joe.
The general comment.
Yeah, I know. No, I asked him. Nobody signed in? Yeah. There you go.
That's out of my ears.
That's all right. Thanks for reminding me. Sometimes I do make mistakes. So, at this point, we're going to turn this over to our city administrator. I guess, or you want me just to invite these up? That's fine, okay. So, under administration reports, our first one is the Police Department. And so Mr. Chief Darren Moody will come up and talk to us about police activities.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is it on, working?
There's no, it's just for the.
It's green.
Video or something.
I'm just here to update you a little bit on what's been going on at the Police Department and where we're at year-to-date. Crime-wise, our statistics, our property crimes are continuing to drop like they did last year. Overall, we're at about 20 less burglaries in the city and about 76 less thefts overall in the city than we were at this time last year. The bad news on that part is our auto thefts are up this year over they were last year. And it's not a trend that we're just seeing alone here, it's all over the state. The good news on the auto thefts is in the last two weeks, we've arrested three different auto thieves. So the detectives are doing the follow-up and working through these things and trying to get them all tied together. The only other crimes that have increased, aggravated assaults are down, simple assaults are up, and most of those seem to be domestic violence-related or drug-related situations. We've also seen an increase unfortunately in assaults on officers resisting arrests and weapons violations in town this year. A lot of those tend to be drug-related or mental health-related when it comes to resisting or assaulting officers. One of the things when we started last year was getting more Neighborhood Watch groups. We now have four Neighborhood Watch groups throughout the city. Neighbors have banded together in Mankey Edition, Third Street, James Street, Springfield Loop. All have Neighborhood Watch programs in place and contacts that we work with. Personnel-wise, we have one officer in the academy. Hector Diaz is in the academy, scheduled to graduate November 22nd. Any of you are welcome to come up to the graduation if you want, and we'll get you the information on that.
Date again on that one?
November 22nd. I believe it's at one o'clock. I'll have to confirm that and get it back. But he's doing very well in the academy. When he comes back in November, he'll be our first Spanish-speaking officer at the department.
Wonderful.
And he'll start his field training program at that point. And in a few months, he'll be ready to roll. At that point, we will be sending another officer in anticipation of a retirement of one of our detectives. And we give a tentative offer to Officer Charles Taylor. We'll be sending him to the academy starting in December. So it's kind of some good news that we've got some people, one right after another, working with HR to try to coordinate that. And other staff-wise, one of our front office staff is anticipating a retirement there in the next couple of months. And so we'll be hiring somebody for the front office as well. And any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Any questions for Chief Moody?
No, I would just like to say I'm really excited about the four Neighborhood Watches now. I hope that those numbers continue to rise. I don't know if that's been part of the reason for the property crimes dropping, but maybe.
I think it's a little bit of everything. The officers are making more arrests this year than they made in the past. Targeting more specific things than they have in the past, warrant sweeps, things like that have increased that.
Great.
But I will say I was very pleased with our latest Neighborhood Watch on Springfield Loop. We probably had at least 30 people, 35 people out there during the first Neighborhood Watch meeting.
Wow. Good job. Congratulations.
Any other questions?
No.
Good job, thank you very much, sir.
Good job.
Next is our Fire Department. And we're going to have our chief, Tim McKern, come and share some information with us.
We have some information in your packets that I provided with you. I'm going to give you a few updates, a little even, their update as of this morning, anyway. We're about 4,014 calls for our district all the way around. The city is right at 1906. That's right on par. Keeping a note on that, that 82% of those are EMS responses, both district and in the city as well. The big news for this week, if you turn the page, is Fire Prevention Week. We want you to talk about that because the push this year is for folks to change their smoke detectors, especially it's time to change those batteries, they're only 10-year batteries when you take a look at that. Nationwide, we had 1,609 year-to-date, that's January 1, 2016 to October, which would be yesterday, 1,609 civilian home fatalities. So if we can make a difference, we've been very fortunate here in our own communities that we haven't had that, and so we certainly want to make sure we do that. The other one, which is a hot button, my own, is carbon monoxide alarms. And a lot of folks know they have to take care of those. To give you some statistics, when it talks about it, from 1999 to 2010, there was 5,149 unintentional carbon monoxide deaths. And so now, as we get into winter, is a good time to start promoting those and saying, folks, put a carbon monoxide alarm in. Just because you may not have gas doesn't mean that if you start to park that barbecue when the power's gone out, there's enough carbon monoxide there that makes a huge difference in how lives go there. One of our collaboration projects, as we talked about, you talked about the home stuff, is that we're working diligently on working on this community outreach program. And it's the Community Paramedics Program. And that's, that's getting some traction. We did get some, some funding mechanisms from the north end, which is great. We'll continue working with that. Really, but that's, the whole purpose of that program is to get out in the community, find the folks that have been in the hospital, making sure that they follow through with what the ER has told them to do, whether it's going to a doctor, going to rehab, whatever those cases may be. So I know that we're working hard with different agencies, the BHR and the rest of those, to see if we can get those folks not to return. And those are huge, huge values to do those as well. So that's kind of what's happening. Keep in mind, we're running about 14.18 calls a day. And so by all means, we certainly, the calls keep coming and coming and coming, and we keep working through those really well. Questions?
What was the name of the program with the hospital aftercare?
The community outreach, we call it Community Outreach Programs.
Okay.
Community Paramedics is what it is. Every community has them. There are different variations of them. For an example, in Spokane, they partnered up with Eastern Washington University, and they put nursing students out in the car with a firefighter. And they just go out and follow up to make sure, one of the issues that the hospital's trying to work on right now is wound care. We did a pilot in November. And the pilot was, we went out, we saw 17 individuals out of the 48 or so, and they were two days post some type of procedure at Mason General. And we went out and checked on to make sure, number one, they followed up with their doc, make sure they took the medicine, and they had their fall appointments. And of the 17, they were pleased that we were out there and that we were there to kind of follow up on them as well. Again, that, that's kind of a, in November was fine because all of us kind of kicked in our own, like we paid for our own, North Mason paid for theirs, Medic One paid for theirs. But now we need to secure that funding source to figure out how we're going to do that community-wide. But it's there, and we'll see.
And you call that the good intent call?
Pardon me?
Good intent call? What do you call it?
No, they would probably, they would probably down as a service call, where they would be on there.
Okay. What would be a good intent call?
She read that somewhere.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It could be a multitude of things. It could be a good intent, it just means that it was a fire alarm, that it was not a fire alarm. There's kind of a various of how the coding falls within for programs, so.
Good.
I had a question. So how does your department kind of fit in with the Narcan thing? Did you have it before? Are you with the police, or the police and you have it? You've been doing it, or?
Well, the police, the police have the save rate. Congratulations, we have had one save, and that's awesome. We've had more than that in the community already. We already had Narcan, but we only had it on what we call is an ALS level. So the paramedics already had Narcan to administer. But now, we've gone a step further than that, is that it's lowering down, we've added, since the police added, now also our basic life support. That means our firefighters every day on every fire truck that we have has Narcan on it that they can utilize, so.
Okay, and for the people at home or whatever, do you want to explain a little bit about what that is?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
We've had an increase in overdoses. And some of these folks, if they're so far, they've gone over the scale, they're unconscious, they're not breathing. The Narcan actually will reverse the effects of what, of what that is, and they'll actually come back to life. They're still going to have to go to the hospital. You're basically taking, the easiest way to describe it is you're taking away their high instantly, and you're waking them right up automatically. We're very pleased that we partner with these folks because when they come awake, they come awake in a really different state, and it usually takes not only us, but it takes their guys as well, and the wrestling matches on.
Right.
And so certainly, we want to wake them up. We've saved their life, but we also have to know that the wrestling match is going to be on.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any other, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have an administration update by our city clerk, Vicki Look.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm really here to report more as the assistant city manager because we're going to talk about some of the things that are going on with our reorg and things like that. So the first thing maybe you've noticed is that we've moved across the hall, and we're now on the Public Works, the ED side of the building. And Ryan has his office over there, as do I. Wendy's moved over there as well. So that we have more access and we can hear more of what's going on. Finance remains on the other side. Their door will not be open to the public because they don't really have a lot, they have customer service downstairs, so they don't really have a lot of members of the public coming up. So you'll come, you'll come around our side of the building and kind of go back and around.
Oh, it's locked.
Of course, it is locked. So, but, you know, if somebody needs to talk to one of the finance folks that are upstairs, then there, there can be a phone call. And certainly, they'll be made available if that's what needs to happen. So we also have Cory, who is helping over at the customer service desk with Nicole now. So there's going to be some cross-training going on there so that it'll free up some of the other folks that were supporting Nicole, such as Jason and Eric. And it'll free up some of their time to do some of the other work that they have going on. So that's, that's new for us. We do have a code update for our city manager. We're changing the name from city administrator to manager, so we have some code updates that are going to be happening there to make that change. And as well as changing the code relating to the hiring of a police chief. And so municipal code update, we're working on that. We'll be bringing that forward to you in an ordinance in the next few weeks. So you'll, you'll hear more about that as we bring it forward to you. I've, we have a whole lot of recruitment that we have going on. We're looking for an engineer. And I believe you probably were notified today earlier that we've received a resignation from Mike Michael, our city engineer. He's, so we will be looking to fill that position as well as an associate engineer because we have a lot of work to get done this year. So we'll have recruitments there. We have our CED director that we're still going to be looking at. So we have a reorg in the, in the Police Department, I believe Darren mentioned that a little bit. Public Works has a reorg that we're working on, and some interviews that we need to get prepared for coming up for, I don't know, truck drivers and things like that. So in order for us to get this all done, I've asked a previous employee, Dolly Baker, to come back and help me with recruitment. We have union negotiations that we're starting tomorrow, so I'm kind of, I say I'm the new person back. I don't think that's going to last for too long. They're going to go, no, you weren't gone that long, so you can't use that excuse. So we just have a whole lot of stuff to do and get done, and that's kind of my update. Ryan, did you have anything? Thank you.
Take a deep breath, Vicki.
Yeah, I know, deep breath, right?
Thank you. Because our mailboxes kind of are in the back corner there, so the door's locked, we have to kind of creep around the back.
Yeah, that's, that's the easiest way to go.
All right.
Through customer service area and around. But like I say, they'll still be available.
Yeah.
A little bit more warning.
Just want me going up to that door and just knocking on the door, I just can go back around.
It might kind of scare them a little bit since there's nobody sitting up front.
Well, suggestion, maybe we can move our mail. I don't move our boxes on either side of the hallway.
We could do that as well.
Don't you have a key?
Well, I got a key, but I don't carry it with me when I come in. I mean, I leave it at home. I only use it if I've got to, you know, usually I come here when people are here.
Cory, we'll just make sure that you get all your mail in the mailroom?
And these, well, these things, you know, I come in, actually, I come using it on Saturdays and Sundays.
Will those fit? I think so, I think we can do that, yeah.
Okay.
But now, there's another problem, kind of, because my key fits to that back corner of the room. You know what I'm saying? Well, I go in this door over here, and then I go in that door, and that goes upstairs to where these binders are kept. Because if I don't get it on Friday afternoon, I get it on Saturday or Sunday.
So would you like me to put it in the back room still?
Probably just forget what I just said and just keep them where they are. Would that be okay?
That would be, we'll just undo that.
Let's have a motion to forget what I just said and keep them where they are, then, because then I have to go up there and I can't find it.
We want to do whatever makes you happy.
Well, I think we'll just keep it there because I got a key on the weekend, so. All right, that's great, thank you, Vicki.
I can find it in whichever mailbox it is. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next is a financial update from our financial director, Cinnamon Brown.
So yes, our front door will be locked, the side door will be open.
That's all right.
You can always knock, knock, some sort of tune, and we'll come running, I suppose. Can always knock, knock some sort of tune and we'll come running, I suppose. Um, yeah, I had to change that to my number one, the door's not open to the public now. So status updates, we've got three things that we've been working on that we're still trying to finish up. It should be done fairly shortly. The 2015 annual report, that still needs to get cleaned up with the CPA firm that we're working with, submitted to the state. Once that's done, the state auditors can come down and start auditing that report. We're looking to have them probably down about end of October. Our original plan was about mid-October, but now we're thinking about late October, so a couple of weeks there. The 2017 budget, which are, I like to think we're right in the middle of it, but I guess we're right at the beginning of it. We are working on moving from our pre-preliminary budget up to the preliminary budget, which will be the, the document that you're kind of used to seeing, that big budget book with the charts and the graphs and a really nice one. So we're going to take the numbers that we have now in the pre-preliminary. And we're going to start working with departments, which we did today a little bit with their presentations, to prioritize, you know, their project expenses, see what funding we have available, that sort of stuff. We'll take those numbers and then we'll start putting them into that document and building that, make it a nice tool for anybody to use. Anything specific there? And then the other thing that we're, we still have going on is obviously the current We are looking at revenue projections, budget performance. For the most part, it looks like revenue is coming in as we anticipated it to, as we projected it to. Taxes overall look, look like, that they could be coming in about 2% higher than we projected. But, I mean, that could always change, you know, by the end of the year.
Is that for like retail sales? Retail sales and property?
Yeah, the telephone tax, BNO, sales, property tax.
Okay, okay.
So they were kind of interested to see that when they got their projection sheet finished upstairs, that I'd share. New updates, new things that we have going on up there, new projects. We do have the online bill pay at the customer service kiosk down here. A lot of people say that they like it. It's a lot more convenient to be able to go on and pay their bills, and so we're pretty excited. Along with that, we kind of partnered up with the, the police with a tablet that will be down here. It will be available, I'm not quite sure when yet, but it'll be available at the customer service kiosk. If the two lines are full and you want to just go pay online, you don't have a phone or a computer or something, that tablet will be available there in the middle. You can go and use it, test out online bill pay, so if you want to. We thought it was a fun idea. The duplex credits for the meters, lots of question about those. The credits will be shown on the November statements. So that's when everybody should expect to see those. And I think the only other thing we have going on is InCode is our accounting software that we use upstairs by Tyler. We are looking at doing a redeployment with them. When it was originally set up, it wasn't set up quite efficiently for what we need to use it for. So we've been working with Tyler to, they did a business process review for us. They identified what modules we're using, how they should be used, how we were not using them. And they basically gave us a 24-page report of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, this is how you can fix your system. So we're working through that. We already started working with one of the consultants there to begin using employee self-service and a time and attendance system in Tyler. So we've kind of moved from using paper time sheets, things like that, to digital. And it'll make the process a lot more efficient, cleanup, payroll, and everything efficient up there makes us happy, so. I think that's about it for our update. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Yay, it's so nice to be moving forward. I appreciate it so much. All of these are great developments as far as the, the software and I love the idea of having the computer at the kiosk. Oh my gosh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We should note that from the other side of that, it's also going to potentially be available for Language Line use. Yeah. So Darren can briefly discuss the other thing that that tablet's going to be able to do for us.
From the, we currently use for an interpreting service is a phone system called Language Line, where we can call up an interpreter and then do a three-way phone. But in the field and even here, it gets cumbersome sometimes going back and forth with the phone trying to do this. Language Line Officer Service, where you're basically FaceTiming on the Language Line with the interpreter here and the person talking there, so you get to see it. The flip side of that is it works for sign language and other things that may become more difficult as the time goes on.
Wow, great.
Very good.
Entering into the 21st century, aren't we?
I am so thrilled. Good.
All right.
Well, also, we're going to have automatic deposit, or automatic, what do you call it?
Direct deposit.
Direct deposit. Direct deposit for our paycheck, so that'll be really cool.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Fantastic. All right, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our city manager, Ryan Wheaton, at this time, for any kind of administration final touches, or?
We have one. We've had some interest in the last couple of weeks from folks in the community asking us about potential acceptance of the Simpson Railroad and also the Roundhouse. We need some direction. So one of the things that our staff is going to do in the next couple of weeks, we're going to put together some options that we can potentially pursue. We want the three of you to take a look at these options and give us some direction as to which path you want us to go down. We're under the understanding that we can accept both the Roundhouse, or Roundhouse and the rail in the city limits, or we can accept one or the other. We could also accept nothing. But we want to present what those options look like, what the potential cost and investment would take from us, and what the return would be from those different options. But we'll bring those forward in the near future.
All right. Does that conclude the, there's another touch over here.
One more.